Okay, we have a quorum of people, so I'm gonna go ahead and call to order the meeting. It's Monday, December 12th, meeting of the Montpelier Planning Commission. We first have to approve the agenda, so if the Planning Commission could take a look at the agenda, and I'm open to a motion to approve.
I'll just add that the SE group's conversation will be more than just the energy draft. It'll be more broadly what they're working on.
Oh, right. Okay. Yep. So do we have a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Okay, motion from Brian, do you have a second? I'm.
Second.
We have a second from Gabe, alright. I think Gabe's coming in really remotely, I think he's in the car. Motion from Brian and a second from Gabe to approve the agenda, all those in favor say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
You opposed? Motion approved. Brings us to comments from the chair. Things that come to mind for me is we are, I'm going to assume we're not going to meet next time. That's gonna be right around the holidays. I'm just thinking that's not gonna work for people. So unless anybody has any objection, we'll just plan to meet the second Monday of January for our next meeting. And as far as the upcoming calendar goes, we're trying to finish up these last chapters of the plan, as we all know. But I have every intention of starting in January, starting to get moving on some of the zoning update stuff and response to the Commerce, Congress for New Urbanism report and solar shading and just zoning related work as well. And I'm gonna start putting work in myself to prepare some things for us and get the ball rolling for that. So you can look for that on the agendas coming January, we'll start balancing out some of these other things. That's all I have, does anyone else have any updates?
Um, sorry, I missed the beginning of the meeting, so I don't know if we, did we welcome Maria or is that on the council agenda for this week? I just wanted to acknowledge that we have a potential new member or a new member here, I'm not sure where we're at.
Yeah, Maria is on the council agenda for Wednesday, so we will have all of our seats filled. Pending Maria's appointment on Wednesday, and I don't know if Maria wants to introduce herself quickly.
Sure, hi, thank you everyone, I'm Maria, I'm a parent in town and a small business owner too. And I'm really excited about joining the commission.
That's wonderful, and this is news to me, I missed our last meeting, so I'm a little behind. Cause, so that's wonderful Maria, thank you so much for offering to apply and joining us. And also, oh, go ahead.
No, no, finish what you were gonna say.
Oh, well, I was kinda moving on, so go for it.
Oh, okay, well, I was just wondering, you know, when I started, I didn't get any sort of orientation, and I know before Marcella left, she was talking about that, and I don't know if she was, if she made any progress on, I'm thinking about that, but I was thinking at least one thing that I think it would be nice for new members to have, and we probably didn't do this for Brian either, but it's just if they can get a printout of the updated zoning regulations, cause I found that really helpful when we get, I mean, we're working on the city plan right now, but when we get back into the zoning.
Yeah, I think that that's an option, I mean, that stuff's accessible digitally too, so that, so that you know Maria, you can access, you know, the zoning regulations on the city website. If you wanna, if you're like the kind of person that gets accustomed to things that way. I don't think that we have any assumption that you need to do a bunch of homework, but I think one of the best things, and we have been doing this, but it's been since I was in the chair, which, you know, Marcella didn't get that, and I don't think I was the chair when you came on Ariane, but I have been meeting with people and just for an hour and doing a walk and catching people up as a form of orientation. And I did that with Brian before he was actually appointed, so, and I did that with Gabe and Jeff and other new folks. So yeah, Maria, we can, we can talk offline about, like, usually it's a walk, but I don't know, it's like 20 degrees right now. So maybe a coffee in an indoor place or something, or just whatever, or a phone call.
That's great.
But, but yeah, we can connect and, and, and talk in that way. And when we do that, I can tell you all sorts of other resources besides just the zoning regulations.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to like, you needed to read the zoning regulations, I just, that was just one thing that I found helpful, cause I personally found it hard to put it all together looking at it online, so anyway. But that's great Kirby, I didn't know you were doing that, so that's really fabulous.
Yeah, I mean, I've been extending the offer, you know, it's up to people if they wanna do it, but that's the best way I can think of to do an orientation, other than if we wanted to go through the process of developing, like an onboarding materials or something, but that's not, we haven't done that. But I can point you to resources and answer questions. But yeah, you know, we should be in touch Maria. And welcome. And also welcome Brian officially. So, next on the agenda is general business. And this is where if there's any members from the public who are here to discuss anything that's not on the agenda for tonight, it's your opportunity to do that, so do we have anyone, it looks like we do have one, do we have any others besides Peter? Okay, Peter.
Hi, I'm Peter Calman, I live in Mountain View, and I drop in on this group once in a while to offer them a piece of my mind. I just wanna start out just by saying a few things, you know, I keep, I read a lot what's going on around the rest of the country in Vermont and so forth, and I send those around to people, I generally send them to Kirby and Mike and to Josh Jerome. So I just wanna say that, and I get various responses, I just wanna say that, yes, affordable housing is a national problem, but it is also a local problem. Yes, affordable housing is made very challenging by construction costs, but there are other significant costs that municipalities like Montpelier can help to reduce or offset. Yes, developers can make more money by building in Chittenden County, but we can also create conditions here with carrots and, whether it's dollar carrots or health carrots, to encourage a developer sector down here as well, and maybe even draw people from Chittenden. Yes, NIMBYism is a factor in limiting affordable housing in Montpelier, but it's just a subset of an attitude that permeates American society. And it's one, because we've lost sight of the fact that our houses are where we live. Instead, our houses have become the largest part of our assets. And that causes us to wanna protect those at all costs for ourselves, for our families, for our, for our, you know, heirs. But I think what we really need to make clear, and we're gonna need to make this clear every time NIMBYism rears its ugly head, is that whatever excuses are made, oh, too many trees are gonna be cut down, oh, what about, you know, the, you know, natural resources and so forth. What we need to remind people of is that this is exactly the kind of behavior that has created segregation, racial segregation, segregation against ethnic groups again and again over the last 100 years. And it's why we have this cute little town. And we've gotta understand that the price of having a cute little town is the suffering of others. And I really think that we've gotta do something to change the attitudes. They're all gonna show up at the meetings, you know, and they're gonna object to the density changes and so, so forth. We've gotta start calling a spade a spade. This is, this is immoral, this is unethical, and this goes against all the things that those very same people actually think they believe. And I just wanna add to it that we, and here I'm talking to Mike, we need the department to begin to take an aggressive, proactive approach, not just to get better regulations, but to streamline and to help people, and big developers and individual property owners to be able to actually do ADUs that aren't gonna cost them $100,000. To figure out how to divide up their large homes into smaller units, and if they're older like me, create an apartment on the ground floor that is, where is age appropriate, and have the upper floors be where other people live. There's so many infill buildings, there's so many things, but people, particularly seniors, and we have a lot of senior homeowners, don't know how to do this on their own, they're going to need help. And all the government programs in the world and all the, you know, the regulations that are changed aren't gonna make a bit of difference if we don't have some very, very strong handholding. I've been saying this for five years, and I'm gonna keep saying it. You can't just be passively saying, as was said to me by Audra when I came with my first idea up on College Street, she said, "Oh, well, have your place surveyed, get an architect to draw up plans, come in and we'll help you." "Oh yeah, right, spend $10,000 and then you'll help us, how about helping us at the front end?" Thank you.
Well, thanks Peter, and I, I think you will be seeing some proposals from us in the near future, go to city council that are, I think, gonna be in agreement with some of the things that you want, and I would encourage you to come and show support when that, when that happens, and rally people as well. Cause yeah, we'll need your, we'll need your support, because we wanna do like a lot of what you're talking about. Okay. With that, anybody else from the public? Okay, so then I will turn it over to SE group to show us the progress they've made on the website design.
Hi, everyone, I'm Aiden Akoff from SE group, with cameras turned off, I can't say I see familiar faces, but some familiar names for sure. I'm here today with Julia, we've been, Julia's been doing the bulk of a lot of the drafting and content creation. And we're, but we're sharing responsibilities in a lot of ways. Our last meeting, we kind of gave an update on our progress with the drafting, the chapters from the Planning Commission content, to then taking them into Story Maps. We edited some of the content and flow of that, and that is still underway. I think Mike's gonna send over some more comments to, so that we can really make sure that we're nailing the flow of this. But the last time we said that we would come with a draft version of like the landing page for this. So we have some content to share with you today. For that, it is, it's getting there, but it'll be good for us to have feedback and for this group to have an initial reaction. Julia, is there anything else you wanna add in?
Uh, no, that's all, we did have a meeting with Mike last Friday to talk about the status of the other planned chapters and make sure that our process is tracking along with you all. So, you know, if there are any scheduling things that the group would like to talk about at this meeting, that'd be great too.
I think I have the ability to share my screen, yep. Okay. Okay, are you seeing a screen with trees? Yes, okay.
You see the trees.
This would be the landing page of the hub site, so the hub site is where we see people who, you know, maybe there's a link from the official city page that says, you know, "See the city plan here", and this is where it would take them. So there's a little update on what the plan is, what the website is for, or sorry, what the website is for, and then kind of pointing people towards plan resources. So as you scroll, people would get options, these will eventually be clickable, they are not as of now. But little icons that will take them to each chapter. Then we have an idea, as you can see, that's not fully built out yet, but for each chapter to maybe have a statistic that really tells some sort of story about progress or a little snapshot as to where they are. It was, it's, it's a goal of Julie and I to kinda have one for each chapter, and Mike's gonna help maybe point to a specific stat, but for this group, as you're writing chapters, if you like highlight some important statistics, we can absolutely highlight them here. But anyway, for each of these, there will be, for each chapter, there's gonna be some sort of statistic like this. And then having some, I think this is just a placeholder photo, right Julia?
Yeah, if you have a photo of all of you that you'd like to include here, that would be great. But this group is hard at work for sure.
And have some, just kind of point towards where people can find more implementation information. Up here, these links will, hopefully it'll take you to the planned chapter, I've been having some issues, but it looks like it's going. So this page is where, if you want to just go to the planned chapters and not scroll to get the icons, you can just jump right here. So as you can see, there is the main photo that's in each of the Story Map pages right now, so this economic development one will take you to the economic development chapter. Eventually. You're kind of seeing the back of house version, you won't see this thing pop up when this is public.
Is that solar away in Montpelier, in that photo?
It might not be.
Um, yeah, so I will update that cover photo. Before, we had received the energy plan data requests last week, I was using, you know, photos that I was able to find online that are without any permissions, just to make sure that they're usable for these purposes, but yeah, I'm gonna replace all the photos in the energy chapter with the ones that we received from the, from that data request, so.
Okay, so yeah, you're on top of it though, we definitely don't want the finished product, obviously, where we're using other towns.
Yes, definitely, this is the, the Montpelier city plan, and there are lots of solar photos that we now have, so.
Oh, great.
Um, yeah, including some, you know, ribbon cutting type photos as well, so there's a lot of great stuff to choose from.
And as far as the people photos, I would just say before, before we get lost and forget about, and like move on, Mike, maybe that would be an opportunity for like people in your office to get some appreciation. Cause we don't, we don't have any group photos of the Planning Commission, but we, but we, I don't know, I like the idea of if Mike has any like nice photos of people working in his office, especially since the caption there was planned implementation, like they're the ones really implementing. I don't know if Mike's still there, but, oh yeah, he's there. So anyways, proceed, sorry for the interruption.
Oh, good, oh, good, and if there was like a community event, I know we had some outreach events where we were taking photos, but something like that where there is community engagement happening, I don't know how you would fully capture plan and implementation in a photo, but I like the idea of having some staff people show up here. So there's only three that are in Story Maps right now, but eventually this will have all 12 sections. Plan and implementation, there is nothing here right now. John Adams, we still need to connect, and maybe we can just put an embed frame on this page and use whatever tool that you have created, or if we need to try to create something here using Hub Site, which is a little clunky at times, we can explore what the best method is there. Do you have any initial, I see you're here now.
Yeah, that sounds good, I think planning to embed an I-frame is probably the safest, safest bet.
Perfect. And then finally, for the additional resources tab, none of these are linked yet, but we see kind of one of these for each chapter, so that as you, as we link plans in the actual Story Map text, they can just go right to this page, and people can kind of see a little library of resources, so if there is, you know, the Vermont Energy Dashboard or something like that, that can be linked here. So, these are the four general sections that we have worked out right now. Willing and welcoming any feedback, let me get back to the main page here. Hopefully it goes there.
Yes, okay.
What are people thinking about the amount of information and the flow of content that there is currently?
The landing page?
Um, yeah.
That's probably the most built out at this point.
So, yeah, so for the planning question, so this is the landing page what we're looking at now. I think it looks lovely, I think it, it's not too busy or anything, what do other people think? Anybody have feedback for the landing page?
I like the, I like the icons or the info, like kind of the graphics, quick clicks, hello, make it easy.
Yeah, that is nice.
Is there a section on here, I didn't see if, like, how to, how to read this plan, I'm sorry, maybe that, you guys scrolled by that.
It's more right now.
Oh, yeah, sorry. Oh, I've just seen it, more right now just for the website, there isn't, I think we're still trying to figure out how and where we would link to like a full text version of this plan, where I can see a "How to Read This Plan" blurb being really important.
If you scroll down, Aiden, there's a section there next to implementation. Yes. I believe, okay, maybe we did eliminate this, sorry about that, but there, there will be some sort of information on this page about different audiences intended to use this site, so if the commission is interested, we can certainly provide like a paragraph or, or some sort of explanatory text to say, if you're a member of the public, you know, these are some ways that you could use this site and the pages that you might want to visit, or if you're a member of the development community, for example. So those are definitely possibilities.
Sounds good.
That sentence here, Julia, was just kind of absorbed into this section, but I think that it sounds like kind of building out a couple different pathways or things to focus on for different audiences would be helpful.
And is this where you would explain why, why we, why we're doing the plan? I guess, you know, as more of the new guys, I'm, I'm just trying to get, I was met with Kirby and others to figure out the context for all of this, and certainly they pointed me to a statute, so I assume that's gonna be part of this too. This is why we're doing it, this is, this is how you do it, you know, these are the sections we're working on, it sounds like that's yet to be built out, but it's coming.
Well, it's, that's an interesting question, Brian, cause I think there is kind of a threshold question of, you know, the, the, this is the website that takes you through the plan, there's going to be a version of the plan that's more of your classic book, and that would probably have to have the statutory reference, but I'm not sure that the website has to have it, so, and Mike, correct me if,
No, this is, the web, this hub is going to be the, the city plan, there's not gonna be a separate printed document, we're gonna be doing it all in this, this is going to be the plan.
Okay, okay, so yeah, for, I, I thought we had talked about there being the, like, a second, more official version, but, but now this is gonna be what we point to as the official plan. Does the statute specify that we have to have reference?
It doesn't, doesn't say it has to be a printed plan, it's just the plan has to include these 10, 12 elements and these certain requirements, it doesn't actually give a required format, so that's why we've taken the liberty to say then, we think this is the best approach going forward. 21st century plan.
I mean, I like that, I'm glad that, I'm glad that there's not, you know, unnecessary other things you have to do. So, so returning to like Brian's like question, I mean, how do people feel about making reference to the statutes on the website?
I think it can be buried in like the about stuff, or, I don't know, I like how proponent of less is more. My, yeah, my only thought or with this, which I think provides a really good framework, but instead of like the, that, that intro paragraph, I would love for us to like, like, let's put our, our big idea out there, you know, like here is, we need like a 15 second version of the plan, a two minute version, and then like the 20 minute to infinity version where, you know, those very few people are gonna dive in, but if there's like one or two like themes that tie everything together, can we just like hit people with it like right away? Montpelier is, and like, this is our vision, this is the community we're gonna, we're working to build, build toward. And get away from like, a little bit more like the institutional, like, this is our plan adopted according to, you know, Title 24, 43, whatever. And it doesn't, I don't think it would take very much to, to get there and, you know, without, without actually coming up with that overarching theme, it's, I don't think we can ask like SE group to say like, "Hey, can you come up with the overarching" theme of, unless, unless like you're inspired and you're like, "You know what, I've gone through these and I've got it, I'm gonna sympathize all of their thoughts."
So what do, what do people, what do people think about us at our next meeting in January? Spending some Planning Commission time drafting the interlanguage for here, for the landing page? Does that sound sound like worthwhile thing to do?
That is absolutely something that Julia pointed out as well, to really have, to start with that vision, and I think this is a great spot for it.
Okay, just quickly, I don't know, maybe I, I'd be willing to like throw up a draft for people to noodle while we're talking about that. What, what are the big ideas we do wanna cover? I mean, what, what are those big story type notes that we should hit on? Do you have specific things in mind, John?
I mean, housing in and around our, you know, walkable downtown, housing has just been like
Downtown housing has just been like the reoccurring theme in every. Every chapter, right?
Yeah.
And and like not only, I think framing it also as as. As a welcoming you inclusivity and like welcoming new household. Um. By focusing on like housing, like we can't, we have to stop using the word like density and. Um, just, you know, dehumanizing the concept. We're not trying to shove as many buildings as possible in the Montpelier. We're trying to create like homes for as many new new. Uh households and and new residents to come in here and live and. Have an opportunity to experience like the amazing city that we all do.
So um, I'm thinking about how to frame that. One thing that comes to mind is talking about how we feel a sense of responsibility to provide. Housing and inclusivity for the region, considering, you know, with capital city and the, you know. But is responsibility the right word for the tone we want, or is it more, do we want to use? A word with less baggage, it's like friendlier, like uh. And we have a desire to provide those things. I mean.
Let's just say we're gonna do it, like. Let's just do it. That's our plan. But but we will. You know. Become the community that. Had housing to accommodate. A greater number of people.
One question is like, you know, in in a statement like that. We have a responsibility to provide housing or we are committed to providing housing, something like that. Um, is who is we? And I think um. My suggestion is. That this statement should not be coming from the planning commission or like be written in a way where it's coming. It, you know, it could be read that way, um but rather just like very general statements about. Um, the major directions um and vision of the of the plan.
So, I mean. When we're when we're using a subject for our sentences instead of we uh like the city.
The city, yeah.
Yeah, um, yeah, okay. Um, we kind of. In things we write, we kind of use both of those, but um. I. That sounds good. So the city will blah, 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 provide housing, walkable communities, inclusivity. Anything else we want to capture here as the. Highlights, high points of our plan.
Um, something maybe about. Energy or climate change or, I mean, it all that stuff is related, but I I think highlighting that as well.
Um, yeah, so like climate change, energy, that's going to be more related to like. The world environment. Um. I mean, is that where we want to focus?
Well, I guess, yeah, maybe it maybe, I don't know. I I'm just brainstorming here because I don't know how detailed we want to get, but just. I think reminding, maybe reminding people that it, I mean, it's all connected, of course, but um. I don't know. I. So I I'll I'll think about that more.
Okay, um, yeah, it's just it's just whenever I start thinking about like the work we do, I mean, when it comes to the environment, we're thinking. Local and global environment and different aspects of the plan, so um. I'm just, I just wanted to know if we wanted to specify one over the other or something like that. Um. But I can draft up something I can.
Yeah, in in previous sort of visioning exercises, we've we've done this for a variety of towns. I what I am remembering the steps are is that there's a couple just. Words that are thrown out like. Character vibrancy, walkability, and then it's kind of crafted into. Like a vision statement, Julia, is that kind of how you've done it in the past?
Yeah, vision statements are can be useful um as just one. Very long sentence as opposed to capture the sentiment of the whole plan. Um, and, you know, they. Sometimes um communities will use them um in a lot of different. Contexts like that vision statement will um also function as like a vicious statement for the. For the whole community and not just the plan, but it's a useful um tool to just summarize. Some of the um. The main themes of the plan, but I think a vision statement is is not necessary. It's it's not the only way to to capture this kind of information. Um, I think a couple um. You know, short, there are a couple of ways that I could see this working in terms of showing this at the start of the um. Landing page. Uh, one example is um a couple like value statements. Um, like, you know, the city of Montpelier values the creation of housing for. Um, to allow new residents to enjoy the community or something like that. Um, and just having those couple of statements, given that this is a. Um, you know, webpage, um, we can try to make it that more dynamic than just like a couple. Then just like, you know, a block of text, we can add in media or graphics um to spice it up. A bit, um, but yeah, value statements could work. Um, I also think, you know, you could. Um, go abstract with this if you want to. You could have a bunch of words that. Um, are emblematic of the goals of the plan, so um, you know, like a word cloud type. Um, thing, it could be like housing, sustainability, um, walkability. Um, historic. Character or something. These are also things that you could. Um, you know, provide, it's just a snapshot of the themes that the plan is. Uh, concerned with. And then um underneath that. Uh, there could be like a short paragraph explaining, um, you know, the context for those words. So those those are just uh a couple of ideas. None of them, um, you know, I I think a variety of things could work here.
Yeah, thanks. Um, what I'm gathering from. Our previous discussions and 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 I don't know where I'm seeing things is. Um, like John's saying, like a s- it's a statement of. This is what we're going to do. This is what this plan is going to do is kind of um what we're going for for the intro. But I'll draft something up, we'll kick it around, um, we'll forward that um to you. Uh, once we have something and you can also feel free to then also. Give us feedback about. You know, what could be done with it.
Yeah, and I don't think there are any right or wrong ways of doing it. I mean, we could um put this together in the format of of. Um, almost questions if you, you know, framed it in such a way of saying, you know. To to answer the question of, you know, what what is a city plan? You know, this is, this is where we identify our values and identify our goals as a community and identify pathways. Um. To to accomplishing them, you know, this could be, you know. How do we create more affordable housing? How do we, you know, um, you know, so you could just lay it out and it kind of relays. Communicates to the public. That's what this plan is looking at is to answer these types of questions. So I think there there are lots of ways you can think about this same idea. Um. And there is no right or wrong way, um, and I think we'll, we can just. Think about it and we can talk about it in that first meeting. I'm trying to think I should check to see whatever that January date is. And we'll sit down and talk about it.
It'll be January ninth.
Yep, January ninth.
Uh, yeah, so I'll I'll try to throw something together tonight and kick it around and then people. We such as something to work off of for us to to modify and get there for that. Besides the landing page kind of intro. Is there anything else um content wise that the planning commission or SE group feels like the planning commission should? Consider and. Try to contribute.
Seems like folks had some thoughts on um the different audiences that this um. Webpage is speaking to, so maybe uh it'd be helpful to hear a little bit more about. What that information um and that section should look like on the on the webpage. Who are the audiences that? We want to make sure um have a guide to looking at this resource.
Yeah, what I remember before about our discussion with that is just. Um, you know, the general public was one where that's kind of what it's mostly oriented toward and then. Um, and then people who are really like looking to delve into like law and policy and just making sure that they. Have a way to get to the. In-depth information that they would want. I I feel like our conversations were mostly about. About that, just thinking in terms of. Just making sure that the in-depth stuff's easy to reach and that. You know, knowing that it's mostly designed for. General public to get the gist of things and um. I I don't, did did we talk about like having an actual just like a. Explanation for like, like, did we talk about writing something? About how the plan's oriented towards different groups? Because I mean, I don't remember us like saying that we needed that. Yeah.
I don't think we spoke about that.
Yeah, so I don't think we necessarily need that unless unless um other folks feel like. It would contribute. I think it's more just like what to keep in mind in the design process. If that makes sense.
It's uh, that's helpful. I I think with these hub sites and particularly with story maps, um. We've sometimes created a little a little section at the start or um, you know, a tab. That says something along the lines of how to use this site and explains the different types of content that's available. Um, and the hub site is maybe a little bit more straightforward for folks to navigate. Um, because it looks like a traditional website um relative to like. You know, an interactive map and a story map. Um, someone might need a bit more guidance to to know how to use that and look at that. Um, but is that sort of page um that explains the content? Of interest to this group? Um, or. Because I I do think we can um put that together and that might be helpful. Um, to just indicate, you know. Here's all of the information that's provided on this site because people, otherwise people may not know. That um they can access the full plan chapters, but also the links to the implementation strategies and. Other things like that. It may be useful to um to just list the content. Um. On a on a page like that.
Uh, what are people's thoughts about? About that approach?
Play that be helpful for some people?
Yeah, I think we, I think we have to assume that people don't. Most people don't. Uh, look at this kind of document every day and don't have any context for it. Uh, because you talk about the general public, so. John's comment about, you know, less is more. But definitely a roadmap of, you know. I mean, I can tell you as a new the new guy, uh. The difference between aspirations and goals was something I I looked back at the. Methodology document about what what what's the difference between those two? Just just uh. You guys are uh way into this. Uh, we want to get ahead. Anybody that's never looked at it before?
That's that's a thought that occurred to me on the section on the landing page um. At the bottom where it looks like there was kind of some work in progress explanation. Um, I I was thinking that too, Brian, where the maybe the the most useful thing, yeah, right here for this implementation information. Where it says example aspirations, I mean, that made me think that it was going to explain what does aspiration mean? What does goal mean? What does? Strategy mean? If. If if the individual chapter pages are using that jargon, then maybe that would be a place to explain that. Um, I'm not so sure though that we're building it in a way in which somebody needs to know. Were we kind of like slyly using the aspirations as like headers or something and then? And then having the goals as kind of statements on there. In other word, in other words, like. We're using that jargon, but I don't think you actually need to know those things to if the way that the plan's being. Being pulled together at the moment.
Yeah.
It says goals and aspirations there, so I guess that is. People may want to know what that means there. But uh, but yeah, here in the content. I don't know, Brian, what are your thoughts there? Like? Um. Like this stuff on the left side of the page is the. Yeah, aspirations and goals, but it's kind of self-explanatory in the in contexts.
Well, I mean, I I looked at this too, I mean. I mean, nitpicky, but aspirations should come before goals because the way you guys described it and the way I read it, you know, aspirations are the big. Uh, what we're aspiring to do and then the goals are the specific, more specific ways. Uh, or more specific kind of mission within that, uh. You know, even if it was. Aspirations were orange and. Goals were gray like you have here, uh, you know, there's something to make sure people understand what what I mean, look, people aren't stupid. It's it's just a matter of. Uh, you you want them to know. What what you're trying to articulate here.
Well, that's a that's a good point. So for for Aiden and Julia to to take note of is aspirations come before goals.
Yep, we can certainly make that change. Um.
But uh, just it's I don't want to, I don't lose all this stuff, but I'm saying too, though.
Yep.
Um. Given that it's probably going to look like this, Brian, do you think we need to explain some like on the landing page? What we mean by aspirations and goals?
Well, you guys have a template for each section that's the same. I mean, pretty much as far as I can tell. I mean, I know there was talk of maybe tweaking it here and there, but.
Yep.
Um, you know, but. Making it as easy as possible for people to understand what what it is, I think, without too many words, uh. Is is going to help them. Like I said, they've never, some people you have to assume, we have to assume the lowest level of. Knowledge about things like this, I think, when we put it together. Um. Uh, and in terms of saying here's a, it doesn't have to be very involved, you can just say each. Each section articulates, you know, a particular area of the plan. You you know, uh. We'll talk about, you know, we'll talk about the background, we'll. We'll give you some uh context and then we'll talk about what are what we aspire to do and how we get there. And how we implement it, you know, stuff like that. I mean, I I think that's a quick. Again, less is more, as as John pointed out, but I think uh. Letting people know what they're about to read is always, you know, a preview. People love previews.
I wonder if it would be helpful, um, you know, to, because. Just thinking about how people might use this site. Say somebody is extremely interested in historic resources, but not really interested in the other topics. And they just click on historic resources, um, and they wonder what these goals and aspirations or aspirations goals. Um, are about, um. It might make sense to head up each of these goals and aspirations sections with just a short. Um, link to another um to a page on the hub site. That explains the architecture of the plan. Um, so for instance. Uh, like right under um. Right at the top there, I could say. Um, what are our goals and aspirations? What are aspirations and goals? Um. Visit this link to learn more about the um structure of the Montpelier City Plan. Um, and then. That could be a very short summary of of what that is, um, because. Um. You know, I think it's what's important for people to understand about these. Um, aspirations, goals is that they are actionable. Um, they aspirations just. In our general understanding of that word, sounds like um something that. You know. Is desirable, but may not actually happen, but as you know. Uh, this group knows, um, you know, the purpose of writing these things down is to make sure that there could be progress on. On these things, so. Um, I think it it might be helpful to define that.
Uh, the other thought, John, and John mentioned this is. But my thought is, you know, you've got the background synergies and and goals and aspirations. There also might be a tab up top that's just. You know. I don't know, maybe about this plan. That takes you to a different page that has answers some of the questions that you were just talking about. You know, rather than have it all in the landing page of the hub, maybe the landing page just says. You know, if you're interested in knowing more about. You know, if you're interested in knowing more about. X, Y, Z, or, or, you know, each chapter will tell you about these things, kind of the same way Brian was, was talking about it. It can be just a real short thing on the. Landing page that says. If you're looking for this type of information, look at the chapter links. If you're looking for detailed policy questions, um, you know. Perhaps staff, members of committees, these types of things, you might go to the implementation page to find out specifics of how we do this. We don't need. A lot, but we can put them in side-by-side boxes that says. You know, the links below are gonna, you know, take you to the chapters. The chapters will talk about these. Or you could go to the implementation page, they'll talk about these. If you're in the implementation page, then you'd have that. Extra tab on top that you could click about this. Plan, and if they click on it, it would, we could have more detailed information. That really gets into what's an aspiration, what's a goal, what's a strategy? Um, what was our process? What was our purpose? You know, kind of getting a little bit more wordy and wonky into it. And that's just a thought.
Yeah, yeah, thanks, Mike.
So wanting, wanting that information in, in one page that we can link to from everywhere versus. Having like a small blurb of text that shows up in each of the planned chapters.
I was just throwing that out as an option to put it in as one, but we certainly, if we can digest it down to a small enough piece that we're not losing. You know, a lot of page space.
Yeah.
If it can get digested down into a pretty tight box that's not using up a lot of our space, then. Yeah, put it on each page, but. I just think over time, we're gonna probably find a number of things that we keep saying, oh, that would be helpful to have.
Yeah.
You know, cause a lot of our plan is about being strategic. Maybe we need to talk about what's strategic and why being strategic is important. Or, you know, the window of this plane is eight years. I don't think we want to be really talking about that on the landing page. We don't want to be boring people with those things, but. If we've got a page that kind of hits a little bit of the. Wonkiness, then. People who want that information can get it.
We could potentially, and you know, we have four tabs up here. We could do like. This is actually just called introduction or something like that, where it has. Little bits of information about each. So you have the little blurb, you have the icons, which will be the same as the planned chapters. The, this, the stats, and then just a teaser for the implementation. If people want to get there, and then there could be. Like an actual true about the plan tab where we go through the structure, the legality. The timeline and some of like the glossary terms. Um, and then people, we can just link to the about the plan. Uh, but I think, I think explaining. At some point in a more. At some point, even if it goes to implementation, explaining between aspirations and goals. I think will be important, and I think for, if this group can nail the definition of how they see it, then we can. We're happy to communicate that, but I'm, it's, it's hard for me to actually verbalize the difference between aspirations and goals.
I can, I can help you with how we do it, how, how we framed it.
Yeah.
Cause it was very specifically written.
Okay.
So, yes, what I'm thinking of doing is uh. Kind of with some draft intro language for everyone, for us all to, to pour over. And then also drafting some bo, I'm gonna call it bottom of the landing page language, but that's, it's describing the um. Basics of the, the terminology that goes into the plan. Um, both of them try to be succinct as possible, but the idea with the top part being like. They capture the reader's attention story, like what, like what John was talking about a while ago. Um, and then the bo, and then the bottom stuff is just like succinct. Um, explanation of, of, you know, what we're just now talking about. So I'm thinking if we start there. And we're comfortable with that, then that, then we'll be in a position to see whether we, we feel like we need that additional. Page of explanation or not.
Okay.
So, so yeah, I'll, I'll send that around before our next. Meeting.
It's perfect. Yeah, I mean, I try to, when I. Am looking over websites, I do try to like be careful about the amount of text that's used, just thinking about my own personal willingness. To read block text on a website. Um, so whenever there's ability to like. Make it bullet points or like we can make it into a little image like we did. Something like this, so um. You know, this is probably, like this text doesn't need to stay, but probably not much longer. Than something like this would be appropriate for both of those sections.
Right, yeah, that's what we'll do.
Perfect. Um, so for our, well, actually I'll pause really quickly. Does anybody have any other initial reactions from the quick first scroll through? The hub site?
I, I think we can talk about it a little bit more. My thought was the, the box at the bottom of this landing page that Kirby was gonna rewrite, I thought might. Be more appropriate in the actual implementation. Page rather than on this front page. But that's something we can talk about in January. That, that would, that was just my observation. And I also might move those statistics. My thought was I would have moved the statistics above the, the page, uh, the, the block of the twelve tabs.
Yep, absolutely. And we'll have to be careful about, you know, there's gonna be twelve of these as well, so how to, how to organize those. I might take them just. Uh, I don't make, maybe like create different sizes or make it a little bit more visually interesting, so it's not just a bunch of icons. Um, but I think that makes sense.
Is it possible that the statistic icons actually just live in the corresponding um city plan page? Just, just in longer terms, to keep, to keep it uncluttered here, maybe. Those would be a good feature in the. The actual chapter pages, cause they seem a little bit out of context here anyway.
Yeah, and I think our vision for them was kind of like a community snapshot that had again that little teaser of. Um. You know, if you saw that sixty percent of the renewable energy or something was, was created for the town. Would you then be more interested in like reading how they're gonna get to a hundred or something like that? Um. But. Agreed, like we want to make sure that this. Tells the story we want to tell, so whether or not that's just, okay, this is the plan chapter. This is the city plan, here's the chapters, go read them. And have a little bit more of the snapshot in the actual chapters themselves. That's absolutely a strategy that we could take.
Yeah, I'm open to either one. Just threw that out there while we were talking about the, the options. Um. Because, yeah, I, I, but I, but I, I love the graphics and the, and the way that they're used to catch people's attention. I mean, that's. Absolutely great value you guys are adding there. Um, does anyone have, oh, go ahead.
I'm gonna say that opens the opportunity a little bit to, like the energy one is full of statistics. So if we do move that section to the energy chapter, it opens the door to have maybe three or four. Highlight statistics or graphs or charts there um versus just one from each.
Yeah, I mean, I, I, I like how things like this could put the chapters into, but. To help people understand a, a perspective on the chapters. I'm sitting here, I'm, I'm like way meta-thinking it, I think, but. If we're trying to tell the story of the whole city on icons like this, then it's like Mark Twain. Lies, damn lies and statistics kind of thing where, for instance, when we, if we're saying that. If, if we're trying to describe our city and say sixty-six percent of residences are, are historic structures. Does that seem to imply that it's a really big deal to us to get people into historic structures, you know, or like? You know what I mean? Which is, that's actually probably a controversial topic, really, if you dig into how people feel. There are some people who think that, yeah, the whole city should be. Shut down and historic and made into basically a store park, and then other people who are like. Let's not fixate on that and let's find people places to live. So, so for instance, you know, like this, like. I'd hate to inadvertently tell a different story because somebody else has a different perspective of their.
Um, yeah.
But again, I know that that's. Reading into it a lot.
No, I mean, when I first saw that, I was like, that's just a bunch of energy and efficient homes. Like, that's absolutely my perspective on that statistic. Which I know is covered in the plan and there are, you know, ways that you can. And modernize and, you know, be more energy efficient, but I, I completely agree. There's multiple, multiple ways to interpret these.
And I, I think that goes to the question you were uh, talking about Kirby and, and Aiden, you mentioned it earlier about the. The story to tell. I mean, what are we talk, what are we trying to communicate on the landing page? Um, and I think we just have to, once we know what that is. Um, we want to capture them, we want to grab people. If they, if they click on it and they get here, we kind of want to grab them and make sure that they. They, they want to move forward and so, you know, what's the city plan? Why is it important? Um. And just try to get those few pieces uh to, to capture them, and if we can use statistics to go through and. You know, as I said, as, and I, and I was just throwing stuff out when I said have them in the forms of questions, you know, uh, how do we get more affordable housing? And then there's, you know, there's an icon, you know, only, you know, only thirty-two percent of housing in Montpelier is affordable. Um, now we've made, you know, now we've put the statistic and we're, we've started to communicate people. Why is the city plan important? Because we want affordable housing and only thirty-two percent of our housing is affordable. We want a clean planet and. You know, uh, only fifty-three percent of our energy is renewable. Um, and these are the things that our city plan is gonna try to address. Now we've communicated what we're gonna be talking about in the plan, why it's important, and hopefully we've captured people and. Whether that's in questions with these things or whether it's with pictures or whether, that, that I think is what we want with the landing page. People hit it. What is the city plan? I don't even know what this city plan is. You, you click, you, you see the city plan and we can very quickly grab you and let you know what this plan is about. And we're not getting into defining aspirations and goals. We'll do that in a bit. Um, but we capture people, we have them start to be able to know. Why, why they want to explore a few things on this page, and then we can go through and say, and, and we talk about it in twelve different chapter areas, and here are the twelve. Chapter icons. Each chapter will tell you these pieces of information, and if you're more interested in the details. Go see the implementation page where we talk about very specifically how we're gonna do it. Um, and that. And that's just one way of. Here's the story we want to tell and we're gonna do it, and I think you as the planning commission, we as, me as staff. We've got to decide what the story is, and then that will help dictate. Which pieces we grab and how we use them. Cause we don't have to do an icon for every single chapter. I think we just need to do enough to tell people. This is what we're doing, and this is what's important. Then when we get to the page, we'll have more of these icons. That says why historic resources are important. Sixty-six percent of people live in historic buildings. That's why historic resources are important.
And when you're saying icon in this case, you're talking about the, the statistics based ones.
The statistic icon in any case, yeah.
Yeah, and I, I do want to make, just make sure I understand the, the icons we have for the chapter pages. Um, that's all of them, right? Yeah.
Yeah, I think that is all of them.
Okay. Cause, okay, and this thing I'm gonna try to write up, I'll, I'll mention that, that there's twelve chapters, cause that. We haven't, we haven't known how many chapters we were gonna have all along, so I guess twelve's a month. I'm, I'm learning that. Okay.
Uh, actually, it might be eleven, because I don't know if we're actually gonna do governance. That has, that, that was an idea that we haven't actually written a governance chapter, so it might be eleven. We could replace that with the icon for the implementation plan, though, if we were trying to keep it symmetrical.
Some humor to not having a governance plan, but. Um, it will, you know, twelve, having twelve is aesthetically. Ideal, but I don't want to create more work.
Symmetrical.
And we eventually do plan to have a, a, a governance, and as I said, we can always put an icon in for the implementation plan as well.
Um, right.
Takes you to the implementation, same thing as the implementation page, but.
Yeah, no, that could be good. I like, I like. Where the conversation's going, really nailing down the story, and we can create whatever graphic support to tell that story. Um. So, yeah, don't feel like any of this is set in stone. Icons and charts are super easy to make. Um, so, yeah, please feel like there's still creative freedom in telling that story. Uh, I think we just mostly wanted to get confirmation on the. The general buckets of content that we wanted to have on this website, and I feel like we have good direction on that.
Yeah, one additional thing um that I'm hearing is, you know, really wanting to draw people in um. And keep them, you know, they might click on it, but to uh really encourage them to peruse the site. And um, having engaging text and telling a story is a great way to do that. Um, but you can also do that um through um, you know. Just activity on the page, so um, things like. Video footage or like gifs, things like that um that are dynamic, um are really appealing to people, so. Um, if that's of interest, we can um look into incorporating um that type of media. Um, which could be helpful in just making this um a more visually interesting page.
I think we, we definitely are counting on uh. SC group using photos and other appealing, you know, aesthetically appealing things to help us. Um, we definitely don't think that our, whatever prose we come up with is going to. Alone, capture people, so I think we're definitely counting on that. Uh, as far as. Uh, gifs or videos, I mean, I would be inclined to defer to you to know. Um, what would, you know, practically work? Um, because I'm having a hard time imagining that, like. Um, it seems like a video that's playing with audio is going to take all the attention, all the eyes away. And then, I don't know if people would find a gif annoying or not. These are just things, I mean, I don't know. This is why I'm deferring to you, cause I do not really know. Um. Do, do, do any other folks have thoughts about? Options for things or? Any other thoughts? Um, does SC have anything else they were planning to show us?
Nope, not at this point. Our next steps are to, um, you know, kind of continue to noodle on the. Hub site. I think we'll pause a little bit on that until this group has had um. More time to provide edits or feedback and copy and all that. Um, we have highlighted on our little. Uh, next steps list to do our draft of the utilities and facilities chapter, natural resources and arts and culture. It's my understanding that utilities and facilities will get. Confirmed this evening, okay? Um, so yeah, a follow-up on, you know, green light, red light on utilities and facilities would be fantastic. And then I think our housing chapter is the next one that is queued up for conversion into story maps.
That's great, and you've probably collected that housing's a pretty big deal for us right now, because it's a. It's a hot topic, but it's also, I mean, it's just, it's a hot topic for a reason, it's.
Yep.
Really needed. Um, so that would be a good one to have as um. I, you know, very high quality page for.
Absolutely.
Do we have anything else for SC? Anybody have any other ideas? Everyone understand the. The plan at the moment? Okay. All right, well, we can move on. Um, thank you so much, Julie and Aiden, for the time. And all the work.
Thank you.
Thanks.
We appreciate it very much. Okay, let's move on. Uh, so yeah, we have to do this, the final. Uh, so, yeah, we have to do this, the final review and approval of utility and facilities information, implementation strategy and, uh, and the chapter. Um, so, turn over to Mike to tell us where we are with that.
But still, I mean, it was really, I think the only thing that was outstanding, because we had already gone through in. The first meeting in November and kind of reviewed and approved everything, and then. We were gonna approve it in the second meeting, but then a question came up on, um, the act, uh, one seventy-four. And so, the follow up on that is that. And I was pretty sure I knew what it was at the time, but I just wanted to double check, most of what Act one seventy-four was getting at was. For al- allowing. Local municipalities or regional commissions to be able to comment. And have more control at the, um, the PUC for citing, so. Our energy committee actually. Decided they, as much as we wanted, they wanted to participate. Because we were the capital city, at the same time, they actually. Were just as comfortable to not participate at all, because. Opening the window up for the municipality, because right now we can't. I mean, we, we have very little participation at the PUC. But if we do this and comply with Act one seventy-four, then we. Get more comment, which actually in a strange way. Gives more opportunities for appeals and more opportunities for neighbors and people to. Um, oppose projects if we start. Getting, getting ourselves involved and participating in the process, and so the. Energy committee was actually happy not participating in Act one seventy-four and the advantages it gives it, most of the reason that was passed. Was because there were communities in Addison and Rottland and, and other counties. For communities that did not want. Or wanted to limit the amount of solar projects that were going into their towns. So a lot of one seventy-four is actually a good tool for opposing projects, um, as opposed to encouraging. The rollout of those projects, so that's why the energy committee actually wasn't that keen on participating and, and kind of going through that process. So I certainly can go through and, and we can do the, do more work on that and, um. It was mentioned more with regards, in this case, to the utilities, should we have, because it was the utility, should we have more of a conversation about Act one seventy-four? Um, it also could apply to the energy chapter and might actually apply more to the energy chapter. Um, and this is, this is a planning decision up to you guys, the, the, as I said, the energy committee's recommendation would be not to. Do that extra effort.
Kirby, um, last week it was Aaron's question. And all he was asking was just to make sure that we had taken a look at it and there wasn't something that we were missing, because he remembered. Conversation from the past and based on the energy commissions, you know, discussion, I think we'd be okay to move forward, but. I don't know if there's other, other thoughts on that, but that's what I remember from our last meeting.
It sounded like an Aaron question. I wasn't here, but that's, that's where I went with that. Uh, just because he used to even work in that area, or still does, I think. Um, so, uh, how do people feel? Do they need, do you, do we need Mike to? Walk through anything more? Uh, do, are people feeling comfortable to vote, or do we need to discuss? The strategies any further? I figure we're, we're gonna start with the, the goals, aspirations and strategies and then move to the chapter.
Well, I think we've looked at it a couple times, I mean, if the other, if there's a, people are ready to vote, I mean, I would mo- move that we. Go ahead and move it forward, we can see what the SC group is doing, they're taking our. Sort of general trajectory and then turning it into, you know, something that fits the. You know, what that's gonna look like, so it's not gonna be word for word anyway, um, so I, I feel like it was. I don't know if you saw this also, but Aaron had condensed some of the, the goals that were sort of overlapping, right, like. I think originally there were eight or nine, and now there's, you know, a handful, so. Um, anyway, I would move that we move forward with it, send it to Mike and SC group.
Okay, yeah, so just to catch me up, since I, I, I had to miss last time, so, yeah, Aaron was planning to do that, um, and, and. So I take it he has done that, I haven't actually read it yet, but, and everyone was happy with. Rewritten goals, and that's what we're, yeah, we plan to approve that, great. Um, okay, well, Gabe, uh, has moved, and what I was understanding from what he was saying is he also. You were also talking about the chapter language too, you feel like that's. Been finalized as well, so your motion includes approval of the. Um, the goals and aspirations strategies as well as the chapter language?
Yes.
Okay, um, so do we have a second to Gabe's motion?
Second.
Okay, we have a second from John, uh, do we have any discussion before we vote? Does anyone? Need any, anything more about this? Okay, so, um. Go to votes, those in favor of approving the. Goals, aspirations and strategies and the chapter language for the utilities and facilities chapter, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Can you abstain? Okay, so that's. Five oh. Um, that's great, that's great, and thank you again, uh, thanks, I don't, I don't know why I said again, for the first time. Gabe, thank you for covering last week. Seems like things. Uh, went smoothly. Um, and since we have some time left, um, we have some minutes to approve. So if everyone can take a look at the minutes from November twenty-eighth. That Mike sent. And I'll take a. Let us know if there's any edits that are needed and. When people are ready, I'll take a motion to approve this.
Can I move approval of the minutes from November twenty-eighth?
Okay, we have a motion from Ariane, does anybody need more time? Uh, I need a second.
Second.
Okay, second from, so, from John? Second from John, okay, those, uh, favor approving the minutes, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, minutes are approved. Um, so, okay, that was a. It was a good meeting, I think we gone to the.
Did, did we want to, um, check on? Uh, the, uh, Bethel, I don't know if he or she. Um, had any questions or comments, I, I had thought, uh, that was somebody who was part of the SC group, but apparently not, so.
Sure, yeah, I was just gonna let it go, because, you know, the, no one spoke up during the, um, you know, open business section. But, um, yeah, before we adjourn.
You're always welcome to reach out.
We, before we adjourn, if there's anyone from the public still here who is wanting to reach us at all, now's a good time, we can revisit that. Okay. Um, with that, um. Uh, again, we're, we'll meet on, uh, January ninth. Um, second Monday of January, um. We'll continue to do plan work, and that's, we're also gonna start getting into zoning work again, I just want to make sure that we don't. Put that on the back burner for too long, and we, we really do need to, can only get on that. Um, also, in the meantime, people watch your emails and, um, I'll send some language around for website copy. Okay, and with that, do we have a motion to adjourn?
Stuck here forever again.
I move to adjourn.
All right, thank you, Gabe, do we have a second to adjourn?
A second.
Okay, and those in favor of adjourning, say happy holidays.
Happy holidays.
Happy holidays.
Happy holidays. Okay, see everyone in the new year.